Sorry about the interruption there for a moment, but had to handle a couple of things. So we'll jump right back into this Memphis City Council meeting. Again, this was July 23rd. We went over the first two items that, and those that included honoring Labana Hospital and also World Drowning Prevention Day. The current item that is coming up is a street name change, and we'll find out more about that here in a moment. So let's go ahead and jump into the video again.
Thank you, Councilwoman Logan, and thank you to the family for being here today. On behalf of this body, we continue to offer our condolences for your loss and admire you for your courage in taking up such an important mission. Madam Councilor, please show that item approved by acclamation. Colleagues, before we move on, I would like to take one brief moment of personal privilege to recognize now Assistant Chief, former Deputy Chief Sharon Hampton on her recent promotion in Memphis Police Department. Chief Hampton, would you please stand up? Congratulations. Madam Councilor, would you please call item number three?
Item number three is a resolution approving an honorary street name change on Thomas Street from Fleming Avenue to Marble Avenue for Velma Lois Jones, District Seven, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman White.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
This is such an exciting day and moment. As you all know, that I am newly elected to the council as of January 2024, and this is my first street naming, and it is such just an overwhelming and exciting moment that it is a street name in honor of you, Mrs. Velma Lois Jones.
She had an entire group come out in force. That's really nice, and I see that. So I'm looking forward to hearing what she did to deserve the street name change, and I'm sure it's something great.
Jones. Whereas, upon occasion, the city council approves the naming of specified public roads to honor those who have served and enriched this community. And Velma Lois Jones is the personification and embodiment of an advocate, educator, and leader who is deserving of this city's recognition and gratitude. And whereas, a lifelong Memphian, a graduate of Menaces High School, a graduate of LeMoyne Owen College, and former hard-working, energetic member of the LeMoyne Owen Board of Trustees, evidence of Velma Lois Jones's seeds of leadership run deep through this city, touching many organizations, but most importantly, she has inspired people to follow her lead, consistently going above and beyond her obligations, serving as a mentor, role model, and support system for our community. Whereas, always exhibiting a love for knowledge, Velma Lois Jones earned a master's degree in education from Columbia University and used her education to inspire and then teach others as a beloved mathematics teacher at Cypress Junior High School. Unable to ignore the call to leadership, Velma Lois Jones became the first black classroom teacher elected as president of the Tennessee Education Association. The longest-serving president in that esteemed organization's history. She has served in varied leadership positions in its local and regional affiliates, Memphis and West Tennessee Education Associations, and has served on the Board of Trustees of the National Education Association. And whereas, the core of Velma Lois Jones's very being is her faith in God and commitment to serve others, which she has fortified and honored over the years of her lifetime membership at Trinity Christian Methodist Episcopal Church since the age of five in 1937. Where she has led and aided in every aspect of church life, including Director of Christian Education, Missionary Circle Number Four, and Stewart Board Number Four.
Whereas, the first woman to serve as president of the Memphis branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. Mrs. Velma Lois Jones marched, she boycotted, she picketed, and she recruited others to join in the civil rights demonstrations that brought Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Memphis. And in 2023, received the Velma Lois Jones Trailblazer Award, named in her honor from the organization. Whereas, in her desire with like-minded women, Velma Lois Jones was initiated into Beta Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And during her more than 75 years of sisterhood, she has served as the 13th Southeastern Regional Championing the invasion and the expansion of the organization throughout Tennessee, Alabama, Mississippi, and the national parliamentarian, in addition to chartering the Phi Lambda Omega Chapter. Whereas, Velma Lois Jones has been recognized and well rewarded for her efforts, she received President Obama's 2012 Drum Major for Service Award from the White House Office of Faith-Based and Neighborhood Partnerships, the Women's Foundation for Greater Memphis 2012 Legends Award, the 2012 Church Women United Valiant Women Award, and an honorary Doctorate Degree of Humane Letters from her alma mater, LeMoyne Owen College in 2014. The Living Legacy Award by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, 2019 Most Outstanding Woman amongst women graduates of historical black colleges and universities, 2019 Most Outstanding Woman of the Memphis Inter-Denominational Fellowship, and the 2023 Memphis Shelby County School Alumni Hall of Fame Inductee. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Memphis City Council of Memphis, Tennessee, that Thomas Street from Fleming Avenue to Marble Avenue shall be designated and always remembered as Velma Lois Jones Street.
In honor of her passion, service, and impactful contributions to the city of Memphis, be it, therefore, resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs so designating such public road. Signed, Janika White, Memphis City Council, Super District Eight, Position Two. Here are some tokens of appreciation from us. We thank you for your service, and I also just want to quickly recognize some of those who have come to join you to celebrate this momentous occasion. We have Tennessee Education Association here, the NAACP Memphis Branch, and we have the beautiful, sophisticated, wonderful ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated.
I love it when they come out and show in force, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's a great thing to get a name, a street name changed, but when your entire sorority, and especially, you know, once you start getting older in life, and she's definitely aged gracefully, when your, your, your group is standing with you to your left and your right, you know you've done something right. So, yeah, that's a, that's a beautiful thing. I like that they came out the way that they did.
And then we have Bishop Marvin Frank Thomas Senior here, supporting Ms. Velma Lois Jones at Trinity Church. He's the pastor and the bishop of the church. We want to make sure you all know. I present to you Ms. Velma Lois Jones.
All I need to say is thank you. Thank you, my sisters. If there is any sisters more concerned about another sister like Velma Lois Jones, you see them standing here, these are the sororities of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority on Chapter Phi Lambda Omega who made the recognition. I do thank you, and all of them want to emulate somebody like me.
Congratulations, Mrs. Jones, very well deserved. Madam Councilor, please show that item was moved by White, second by Swearingen, Washington. Please show that approved by acclamation. Madam Councilor, please call item number four in just one second.
Ms. Velma Lois Jones. I don't think everybody's gonna fit in that picture. I do not think everybody's going to fit in that picture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If anybody's having any private conversations, I ask that you move to the lobby, please. We need to continue with business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four is zoning ordinance, amending ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, to authorize a zoning. Please move all conversations to the lobby at this time. Item number four is a zoning ordinance, amending ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, to authorize a zoning use district reclassification for land located on the southeast corner of Dexter Lane and Cordova Road, approximately 1,027.43 feet north of Megan Road, by taking the land out of the Conservation Agriculture Use District and including it in the Residential Single Family Use District. Up for third and final reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is Z24-01. The ordinance number is 5902.
Thank you, Madam Councilor. Councilman Ford Senior, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and I'll move.
We move electronically, please, sir. Moved by Ford Senior, seconded by Spinosa. Councilwoman Logan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chair. We talked about this this morning and noted some areas that needed clarification. I wanted to see if Director Knick could just bring some clarity regarding this subdivision and as it relates to the drainage, Fletcher Creek Drainage and any other issues. I know that we have a company contracted to study and to assess, and just wanted to make certain that as we continue to approve developments and approve these areas, that that has been taken under consideration and get your feedback on whether or not this area, are there any problematic issues with it?
This Councilman Robert Knick, other words, Director, 125 North Main. Anytime a development happens, there's multiple steps involved, obviously. From one, from an engineer's perspective, they have to ensure that as a development is designed, that they're what we call pre and post drainage match. So there can't be excessive runoff from the site. They contain it in some type of detention or retention to ensure that any downstream impacts are mitigated. That's, that's a requirement. The other thing we're doing is the master planning. Allworld is our stormwater program manager, so all of our 37 major drainage basins across the city, some have been studied, some are still being studied, will be looked at, and on a large scale, looking at ways to address the future needs of our city from a planning perspective, while also looking at current flooding that is already impacting properties, and taking that into the consideration as we either construct regional detention or look at smaller detention systems to help affected properties that have been impacted by prior development that existed before the UDC. So all this is going together at the same time to ensure we're doing what we can to protect property owners from flooding, both from new development and old development.
So with that being said, as we approach requesting applications for new development, are we, because I know you said that previously that may not have been a part of the steps, but now we're taking those steps to ensure that we look at it holistically and in a comprehensive manner to make sure that there's no issues with one affecting the other down the road?
That's exactly right. Like we've never been before. This is on a much more strategic and comprehensive level.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
The answer that he gave, it, it, it just seemed a little confusing because he didn't necessarily answer the question that she initially asked. She initially asked him whether or not it was problematic, I believe, in this ordinance change situation. So the residential neighborhood that they want to build on Dexter and Cordova Lane, whether or not anything was problematic with drainage or runoff. And he said what they are currently doing across the board, but he didn't speak directly to this ordinance, this, this, this item. So I don't get how that answer fit. I mean, it's great to hear what they're doing, you know, now, what they have in place. I guess that means that this has been taken into consideration with this situation also.
I was hoping that we could have Director Belin come up and speak a little. I know that some of the opposition that we have received in regards to this particular item relates to traffic and traffic study, especially during the school year. So if you could just let us know what has been done around that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mary Belin with the Division of Engineering. So as I listened to the committee this morning, Engineering Division did commission a study for the entire Cordova traffic study. It's not fully complete at this point. We do anticipate it to be completed sometime in October. However, as Chairman or Vice Chair Canelli did indicate, I did provide some initial reports as a result of that. The team did do, when they're doing these traffic studies, they look at peak hours as well as peak season. So in this case, the counts that were made were made during school season. So those are accounted for as part of this study. To drill down further, as, again, the study is more of a global, and to determine how the traffic pattern is going to be and what warrants, what signalizations are needed to accommodate some of the levels of service needed for the streets. More focused towards this specific development, there will be certain criterias and certain conditions that will be placed that will have to be vetted through engineering, and that may include a traffic study as well, as well as traffic movement in and around that area. So that will be a requirement when they submit through our, through our land development.
Thank you, Director Belin. Thank you, Councilwoman Green. Colleagues, does anybody else want to hear anything further from DPD or the applicant? Okay. I do have two comic cards. Christine Fox, you're recognized first. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak after you state your name.
Christine Fox, 244 North McNeil, Memphis, Tennessee, 3A112. I just am, you know, we heard about this item last city council meeting, and it was supposed to be held until August. But last night, I looked at the agenda, and it was on there. So, you know, and if you look at this item, it has been pushed through with things missing or not right in the documentation. The process has been very convoluted and not straightforward, and now we're clearly just, you know, gonna push it right on through. So this, you know, people are paying attention when y'all do things like this. Let me just say that. So, you know, y'all just do what you're gonna do. Since I have a minute left, I'd just like to take a moment to say a word in memory of community activists that we lost on Sunday, Ms. Chelsea Glass, who's spoken many times from this podium, a woman of incredible courage and power. So, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Let me respond briefly to what you said. I was the council member that held the item last meeting, and I held it for two weeks. I never said anything about August. If there was another council member that asked for additional hold, I was unaware. I'm the chair of B and Z, and I was not made aware of any requests for another hold. It is, because it was heard in the main meeting two weeks ago. Okay. Diane McCullough.
Diane McCullough, 8518 Farley Avenue in Cordova. Over the past year, I've spent countless hours researching, organizing, and preparing to present our opposition. At this point, I don't know what else I can say, except that my interest in this development doesn't end with zoning approval. I will continue to follow the development very closely, and will continue to advocate for my property rights and for the well-being of the old Cordova community. Thank you to the member of city council who tried to help us, and to the people in the Division of Planning and Development, several of them came out yesterday to look at the situation. I just want to thank them for that. I look forward to continuing to work with all of y'all on this project. And also, one last thing, if you go back and watch the YouTube video of the last meeting where it was held, two different things were said. It was said it was held for two weeks, and then it was also held for two meetings. So just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Hold on, before you leave the podium, you met with DPD yesterday, correct?
I'm sorry?
You met with DPD on the site yesterday?
Yes.
Were any of your concerns addressed?
I think there's a lot of promises that these things will be worked out down the road, but even what I was shown today as, oh, well, this is how this is gonna work, it really can't work the way they're showing it's gonna work because of drainage, where they're showing the drainage location. It really can't work the way they're showing it, and I know that because I live there and because we've measured and things like that. So they did come out, I do feel like they're hearing us. I do trust David Baker with Fisher Arnold, but I'm not gonna stop watching it, because this is, my property is right on the edge of this. I have a lot to lose if anything goes wrong at any point during the process.
Thank you. Thank you for your involvement. Thank you for taking time out of your day to meet with DPD.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you. The constituents have really worked diligently and very hard, trying to work very closely with the developers and trying to understand their value of their property. And when they bought their property in that area in Cordova, I've been talking with Diane and Christine and their group, really pushing, trying to help them, you know, understand this process. But my prayer and hopeful that, that they can work together and do what needs to be done so everyone can have what is needed. When you are a property owner and you've lived in a certain place forever, and then developers come out of nowhere and disrupt your whole community and your home, that becomes heart-wrenching. And so when you have us on this city council, this 13-member board, that should be representing you, making sure that we hear you clearly and understand your needs and your concern, that's what we are elected for. Because when we're out there running for these elections, the developers are not the one who vote for us. It is the constituents who vote for us and expect us to represent them wholeheartedly. Yes, we want development, but we also want development where there is a partnership with the community, not just to do what they want to do and how they want to do, and everybody makes money, and the community has no say-so, and just have to deal with whatever is going on. I think it's unfair, and I think we need to look at a different process on how we do things. And when you get ready to elect people, think about what they didn't do or what they did try to do during election time. So I wanted to close with that. Thank you. It was an honor listening to you all, working with you all. Thank you for reaching out. I appreciate your diligence and your hard work for your community, but I pray that you all can work with the developers and you come to an agreement where everyone can come out feeling well about the decision. I yield the floor, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. Seeing no other members in the queue, Madam Councilor, please prepare the voting screen for item number four.
Okay, so they're about to vote on this ordinance change, and obviously it's about
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, no. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan abstained. Spinosa, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Canelli, yes.
Walker, no. Can you record me as no, please? Thank you.
Madam Councilor, please call the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up for first reading, we have item number 25 on our add-ons, which is an ordinance, let's get the consent agenda on the board, which is an ordinance to amend and restate referendum ordinance 5862 that proposed an amendment to the charter of the city of Memphis to modify the existing requirements for qualifications for mayor and the city council members of the city of Memphis. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5913 is sponsored by Chairman Smiley. Back to our regular agenda, item number five is up for second reading, ordinance number 5910 is sponsored by council members.
Give me a moment. I'm gonna...
Up for first reading, we have item number 25 on our add-ons, which is an ordinance, let's get the consent agenda on the board, which is an ordinance to amend and restate referendum ordinance 5862 that proposed an amendment to the charter of the city of Memphis to modify the existing requirements for qualifications for mayor and the city council members of the city of Memphis. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5913 is sponsored by Chairman Smiley. Back to our regular agenda, item number five is up for second reading, ordinance number 5910 is sponsored by council members, Swearingen, Washington, Warren, Ford, Logan, and Spinosa. Item number six is also up for second reading. Ordinance number 5911 is sponsored by Councilman Warren. Item number seven is up for second reading, ordinance number 5912 is sponsored by the administration. Item number eight is also up for second reading. This ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is ZTA 24-02, ordinance number 5909. Item number nine are notations from the Division of Planning and Development that the following cases were heard, and a public hearing date has been set. For A, case number SUP 24-09, outlet road special use permit, the date of public hearing will be August 20th, 2024. For item number B, case number MJR 24-20, Union Avenue major modification, that date of public hearing will also be August 20th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Councilor. Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Canelli. I'd like to make a motion to separate the question and remove number six from the consent agenda.
Second.
I second it.
All right, without objection, we're gonna remove item six from the consent and vote on item six separately. Yeah, the consent agenda minus six, let's do that first, since you've called them all. I've lost my... Who moved that? Carlisle?
Sure.
Carlisle moved by Swearingen, Washington. All right, colleagues, this is the voting screen for the consent agenda minus item six. Please cast your votes.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canelli, yes.
That item passes. Madam Councilor, please recall item number six.
Item number six is a referendum ordinance to amend the charter of the city of Memphis, same being Chapter 11 of the Acts 1879, as amended pursuant to Article 9, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment, relative to composition of the Board of Commissioners of Memphis Light Gas and Water Division. This was up for second reading. The ordinance number is 591. Is sponsored by Councilman Warren.
Councilman Warren, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask our attorney a question concerning our standard protocol about ordinances. Let me let him finish with his conference, and we'll be able to do that.
Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, ordinances require three readings. They can be pulled off. Now they require two separate meetings of seven affirmative votes, or they fail. It's pretty simple. Either we're gonna let people in the city council vote on this or not. That's it. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle.
Sorry, I missed part of that. It was, I thought that the way it worked is when you had an ordinance that came up, we had three readings, you could vote it down, but it was the third vote down that made it go down. So I guess that's my question. Councilwoman White, could I interrupt your sidebar?
Any member can.
Hold on, colleagues.
Yeah, let's just speed this up, though. Any member can vote to have it, to move, and I'm off the consent agenda. This is, we've done this a few times, so I can answer it very quickly.
Attorney Wade, we please address Council Warren's concerns before we vote on item six.
Yes, sir, sorry. I thought that our procedure was that when you moved an ordinance, it received three readings, and in each of those readings, you could vote it up or down, but it was the third vote that was the official vote on the ordinance. Is that correct? Or was I wrong on that? Because I've had ordinance that have come down with negative recommendations and been placed on the consent agenda and moved through. Or is it appropriate for us to just pull this and vote it down tonight?
Okay, under our rules, you usually do not have debate or discussion during first or second reading. That does not prohibit any member from moving to take an item off of consent and put it on the regular agenda, and it will still have the same requisite number of readings if it passes all three times.
But let's say it fails tonight. Do we have to read it a third time?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now that that's handled, Madam Councilor, will you please prepare the voting screen for item six?
Excuse me, sir, I had a card in.
We don't take cards on the...
Yeah, you did. You pulled it off of the consent agenda. It's now a regular item. Yes, I put it in a card.
Attorney Wade, do we have to allow public comment if items pulled off the consent agenda? We never allow public comment on the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Kent, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes, Joe Kent, 5111, let me go. So there is no hurry on this. There is no hurry on this, this item at all. None. So, you know, there's various ways you can get to it, but it's fairly technical, and it deserves some negotiation. A lot of technical stuff here. You have the RFP that some people want to be put out for power, alternative power. That can be leveraged into this negotiation. You have some people that, that were in the suburban areas that were against legislation that would help with white remediation, that are gonna benefit from that. So you can negotiate this, and there's a pathway that for somebody like me, that I could be for something like this expansion of the board if we have partners within the suburban area. They haven't demonstrated that they are actually partners in legislation and various other things related to the city of Memphis. That occurred the last legislative session when Kevin Bond killed the landlord, the rental registry. Now, I understand there's some other ways to do that. The other thing I'm very concerned about, and I'm hoping you are, is the excess cash on the MLGW balance sheet that should be taken off, put on the city balance sheet before it, before the board's expanded, because it puts at risk those funds either, you know, being used for things other than what's in the city of Memphis. So if you aren't, you know, negotiating any of that stuff, with hundreds of millions, two hundreds of millions, they just issued more bonds on the MLGW balance sheet. I know you can't wait. Can't wait, can't wait, can't wait. That's your time. Can't wait.
Councilwoman Walker.
Yes, thank you. We just have a mic, mic day today, okay. So I just want to go on record as saying that, I just want to share why I'm gonna be voting no on this. When this first came before us, I made the point about the language. The language is very important, and as I'm looking at this now and it's saying that the board be comprised of seven voting members with at least two of the seven members, why is it saying with at least two? I am uncomfortable with that. It should simply say two, and that is why I'll be voting no on this today. The language is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walker. Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really just want to get to the vote, but I'm gonna say two things to set the record straight. City can't transfer cash off MLGW's balance sheet to ours. It's against the law. If you want a legal opinion, it's right there. He's giving it to us in writing. We've had this debate a trillion times. The city has to make an equity investment in order to get a return on it. There's only one instance that we've done that, so that's just not possible. Two, the voters are gonna vote this down, just for what it's worth. They're gonna vote it down. You might as well give them a chance to do it. But if you don't want to, that's fine. And three, whether it's at least two, at least four, at least five, mechanism for putting somebody on that body is still is still the 13 people sitting up here. You're just required, if it were to pass, to ensure that two of those seven appointments comes from the county. That's that's the basic language. I'm going to vote for it. It's going to get voted down. Why? Because Memphisans are basically going to tell the county to go pound sand. There's a straight politics. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be glad to take as a friendly amendment that we just say only two if I could get Councilwoman Walker's vote. But on this particular situation, I think it's sort of playing long, long politics and how we're going to work with people in our sandbox. We had the mayors of Collierville and Germantown and some other municipalities come down and ask us, not because they were really dying to do it, but because they had citizens out there feeling with no voice on our MLGW board and likening it to the TBA situation, where with the TBA, we've wanted to have representation on their board, and we don't own their board. We don't own the TBA. So in my mind, it's it's the citizens probably will vote it down. I agree with Councilman Carlisle. But it's a goodwill gesture to those governments that were listening and trying to work with them, and it doesn't cost us a thing. And I don't think it's bad. I think it would be smart politics and goodwill for us to vote for it. So I again ask my council members to consider that as you make your decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilwoman White.
Thank you. Two things. One, and I thought about whether it should go or shouldn't go. But then here in colleagues saying they know that people are going to vote it down, then it makes me think we already have seven, I believe, seven, seven referendums on the ballot. So to me, it's like it makes it more confusing. And I also agree that I would like to negotiate more and figure out and discuss in a little bit more detail what it would look like to make this kind of change outside of just what we've seen so far in terms of the what's been presented. So I'll be a no vote on this one.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Warren, you're recognized again.
Thank you. I just thought that was a brilliant idea that Councilwoman White had. And I would like to see what would happen is if we just hold this and send it back for more negotiation and see what we can get for the next election. Because there are a lot of referendums that are on this. But as opposed to killing it outright, it sounds to me like we need some more negotiation to figure out what else we can tie to it. That makes sense to me. And if I am allowed by the chair, I would like to pull this and bring it back in six weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, the sponsor came withdrawal, but I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Swearingen first.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I agree with my colleagues, Councilwoman White, Councilwoman Green. I think we have enough referendum that's on for this upcoming election. I agree with my Councilman Carlisle that people are going to vote it down. And I think it needs to be looked into a little bit more than so hurriedly. And what's the rush of getting this done? I think we need to just remove it off because my vote is a no as well. And because we need more dialogue, we need a little bit more understanding. It says Memphis Light Gas and Water, and Memphis is always sharing, always making compromise, always trying to bring other people in. And we never have an opportunity where they ask us to be on their board or ask us, the city of Memphis, to come and join them and play in their sandbox. So my vote is no, and I think we need to totally remove it, look at it deeply, do a deep dive, and really take in consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington.
I'd like to call for the question, please.
Call the question.
There's not going to be a question because he's going to withdraw it. Councilwoman White, would you like to speak again? Okay. This item is withdrawn, so there will be no vote on it. Just just to make it clear, but anyway, that item has to start over if it's been withdrawn, correct? Okay, thank you. Madam Controller, would you please call the fiscal consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That will take us to item number 10, which is a resolution accepting grants in the amount of $1,440,000 specifically for the insert straining program for training of 1,800 commissioned officers. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the services, and there's a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, you're recognized.
Yes, the committee met and recommended approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Carlisle, second by Swearingen, Washington. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 10.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call the MLGW fiscal consent.
That will take us to item number 11. The straining program for training of 1,800 commissioned officers. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the services, and there's a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, you're recognized.
Yes, the committee met and recommended approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Carlisle, second by Swearingen, Washington. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 10.
Funded not to exceed the amount of $511,300 to 480, overhead storage tank painting for Arlington, Stanpipe, Casper Creek, Cloverhaven, Gallagher, Palmer, and Redwood to DNL Tank Sand Blasting and Coatings LLC in the funded amount of $2,344,410. Item number 12 is a resolution approving change number two to contract number 12240, overhead water storage tank painting inspections with Mid South Tank Consultants to change the scope, extend the term, and increase the current contract value in the funded not to exceed amount of $511,300, $31,245.73. Item number 16 is a resolution approving an annual salary in the amount of $171,000 for a candidate for the position of Director of Safety. There is a request for same night minutes for this item. Item number 17 is a resolution awarding contract number 1244, water filter system upgrades to Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder Inc. in the funded amount of $44,599,588.63. And there is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you, Madam Controller. Councilman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommends approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Spinoza, second by Swearingen, Washington. Dr. Warren, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to state that the only person I've ever married works for Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder, but I don't consider it a conflict.
The only person you've ever married. Thank you, Dr. Warren, for clearing that up. Before we go to vote, I want to make a... Mr. Wilburn? Christopher Wilburn in the crowd? Okay.
So for anybody that doesn't know, Grinder, Tabor, Grinder is a a construction company here in Memphis, Tennessee. And the reason why that stuck out so much is, let me see. Yep. So this is Grinder, Tabor, Grinder, and you see these trucks all over the city. And that's what they do. They build, they build, they build, they build. You just don't need a general contractor. You need an ally. We we know your vision vision is ambitious. We've got your back. Grinder, Tabor, Grinder leverages over five decades of unparalleled expertise in the construction industry to skillfully advise and advocate for the successful completion of your project. Our proven collaborative approach assures no goal is insurmountable, no challenge is too big. And so the reason why that stuck out is because they have a $44 million line item with MLG and W for said water system upgrades. That's a big number.
No, the members in the queue, Madam Controller, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Please show Councilmember Cooper Sutton is voting yes, and Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item number 18. I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on. Let's go to item 22.
Item number 22 is up on the board. It's on our add-on. It's a resolution to amend the FY 2024 federal budget by accepting and appropriating the expenditures and revenues for the weatherization program, LIHAP 20-2006 grant in the amount of $1,213,267.67. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met and recommended approval, and ISO move.
This item was moved by Logan, second by Swearingen, Washington. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 22.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes. Please show Councilmember Cooper Sutton as voting yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item 23.
Item number 23 is a resolution accepting report of Tennessee Controller regarding plan of refunding for the 10th supplemental resolution supplementing the electric system revenue obligations master resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $200 million principal amount of electric system revenue and revenue refunding bonds, Series 2024, the bonds. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by MLGW, and there's a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommends approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Spinoza, second by Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call...
As voting yes, I failed to recognize that.
Please call item 24.
Item number 24 is a resolution, a 10th supplemental resolution supplementing the electric system revenue obligations master resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $200 million principal amount of electric system revenue and revenue refunding bonds, Series 2024. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Memphis Light Gas and Water, and there's a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommends approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Spinoza, second by Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please go to item number 18.
Item number 18 on our regular agenda is an ordinance to amend and restate referendum ordinance number 5877 that proposed an amendment to the Charter of the City of Memphis pursuant to Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment so as to provide provisions for the regulation of deadly weapons. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5908 is sponsored by Councilman Warren.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, second...
And so this one is a little bit interesting. Okay, so we have it's a ordinance to amend a charter of the city of Memphis, Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee to provide provisions for the regulation. It says something about firearms, so I'm not 100% sure what we're talking about here.
Item by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 18.
By Councilman Warren. Item number 18 on our regular agenda is an ordinance to amend and restate referendum ordinance number 5877 that proposed an amendment to the Charter of the City of Memphis pursuant to Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment so as to provide provisions for the regulation of deadly weapons. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5908 is sponsored by Councilman Warren.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, second by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 18.
And I'm sure that they talked about that during a committee meeting. You know, a deadly weapon, so this is this is flying on through.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes.
I'll find out.
Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Please show Councilmember Spinoza as voting yes on this item.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item number 19.
Item number 19 is a resolution to approve a use agreement between the city of Memphis through its Division of Parks and Miracle League of Memphis to fundraise and project manage the construction accessible ballfield at Toby Park. District 5, Super District 9, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilman Warren, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Spinoza, second by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 19.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item 20.
Item number 20 is a resolution requesting additional funds requests for an existing contract to transfer and appropriate additional construction funds for Stormwater CIPP 2022, project number ST03222, to repair rehab existing damaged storm drain pipes using CIPP process at various locations. This is the third year of a three-year contract. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Thank you, Madam Controller. Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, second by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item 20.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. We have additional council members. Show Councilmember Logan as voting yes, and Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item 21.
Item number 21 is a resolution requesting additional funds requests for an existing contract to transfer and appropriate additional construction funds, SW22201, install CIPP Annual 2022 to repair rehab existing damaged sanitary sewer pipes using CIPP process at various locations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington.
Chair, the committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and ISO move.
Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, second by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for 21.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. This brings us to our same night minute items. Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, would you please read the same night minute items into the record?
Thank you, Chair. The same night minutes are numbers 10, 16, 17, 22, 23, and 24.
Can I get a second, please? Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, second by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for same night minutes.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canale, yes.
That item passes. This takes us to the heel of the meeting now. We will have, wait for it, 29 comic cards. Reginald Alexander. Name and address for the record, please. Sir, you have two minutes after you state your name.
Yes, Reginald Alexander, dress 3865, South Perkins Road, Memphis. I'm the director of government relations with Mid-South Food Bank. As you guys may know, Mid-South Food Bank distributes food to 31 counties in the Mid-South region, the largest of which county, which is Shelby County. About 50% of the food poundage that we distribute goes into Shelby County, Memphis being a large portion of that. We have another component to our food bank that we also do that a lot of people do not know about, and that's our diaper bank. We do have a diaper bank that distributes diapers, period supplies, and adult incontinence supplies as well. And we're we're kind of low on funds in distributing that. We have submitted letters to all the council, and we have applied for a council community grant. And we hope that you guys will remember us when it comes time for you to vote on that. But I want to cede the rest of my time to my colleague, Jasmine Jones, who is the community coordinator with the diaper bank, to let you know more about the diaper bank and the needs that we have in the community and how that can and how any funds that we could receive could greatly help us in this endeavor. So if I could cede my time...
You can't give your time, but she'll have two minutes as well. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your hard work. Really truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Jasmine Jones. Oh, hold on, Mrs. Jones. I skipped over Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Green, you're recognized. Okay, she's going to wait. Name and address for the record, and you may begin.
Okay. Jasmine Jones, 3865 South Perkins. My name is Jasmine Jones. I'm one of the diaper bank coordinators with Mid-South Food Bank's Bear Knees Diaper Bank. The Bear Knees Diaper Bank works tirelessly to ensure that basic necessities such as diapers, period supplies, and adult incontinence products are readily accessible to our clients as they need them. We host distributions weekly at community centers and other nonprofits around the city. We host mobile distributions monthly at our facility and at agencies in low-income zip codes, and we start diaper pantries in zip codes with the highest child poverty rates. We currently have about 50 partner agencies that order regularly to respock their diaper pantries each month. We serve clients within 31 counties located in Tennessee, Mississippi, and Arkansas. Just this past year, we distributed 629,900 diapers in Memphis alone, which is roughly about 53,000 diapers per month. In order to receive product from the Bear Knees Diaper Bank, clients are only required to have a form of identification and a piece of mail verifying their Tennessee address. This simple registration process allows our clients to easily obtain these items each month. I'm here to advocate for our program, which in turn is me directly advocating for our clients. In 2023, the National Diaper Bank Network reported that 47% of American families were struggling to afford diapers. As prices continuously go up, their percentage is steadily increasing. The families that we serve wouldn't be able to acquire these basic necessities because they simply cannot afford them. By regularly offering these items, families are able to put their limited funds towards their other basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to thank the diaper bank. I was part of a Mother's Day event with Choices at Overton Park, and they provided a whole pallet of diapers for us to give out to about 50 families. There are a lot of excited moms and some excited dads who picked up diapers, and I'm grateful for the support that they give parents in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I ask the food bank people a question? Could y'all come back up for a second? Yeah, I go to First Presbyterian Church, and we purchase a lot of our supplies for our soup kitchen from the food bank, and I understand you just went through some sort of, I guess, audit where you checked to see what you had, and I was wondering how that went, and how are you doing as far as food supplies now that were coming out of the pandemic and all the extra money that we had? Where are you now? Do you need extra funds for food?
Well, the audit went well. We always need money. Right now, we're getting to the point where, especially when it comes to the diaper bank, we don't have enough funds to continue. I believe one of the diaper bank's locations that people may be familiar with is one called Sweet Cheeks. It's one of our distribution hubs, and we don't have the product, no product to give out. That's why they are not currently distributing. So...
So you're low on diapers. How are you doing on basic food substances?
Food, we can always use more. We can always use more resources. We can always use more food. The food bank itself is actually paid for some of the food out of our own resources to keep us.
So y'all are having to take your funds and buy food. You're not getting donations enough to keep it full. Okay. I just wanted us to be aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to thank the representatives for coming down, Ms. Alexander, Ms. Jones for coming down. As we, the children prepare to go back to school, I just want to remind everyone how important it is. I know the principals in my area are always calling for the young ladies that attend school. A lot of times, don't have these supplies and will stay out of school. And some of the people that we usually grant, we may not be able to grant this year. We understand. So having them, having the food bank to be able to be a resource to supply or to direct the young ladies and the principals in the schools to stock up their closets, because we don't want the young people to stay at home because they don't have these products, the period products, and for those that have children, the diapers. So this is a very valuable resource in our community, and we appreciate the work that you all do for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Damon Curry Morris.
Wait, so, well, and it doesn't matter because we're in 2024. But so the kid, I saw the last part where she said something about period products, and that would stop kids from going to school, but I hope it's not diapers. I mean, you know, kids need time to be kids.
Damon Curry Morris, 1529 Donwell Road. I just want to start by saying I recognize the help that I've received from Councilwoman White, Councilwoman Spinoza, and Councilwoman Swerentown Washington. Thank you very much. You all, I'm tired. I'm tired of this police department. I'm tired of the incompetence. I'm tired of the apathy. I've just been on the phone for six whole hours with people all across this city, and you've seen the emails. When did we come to a place in this city where we just continue to see things right in front of us, but we ignore it? We ignore the people. Now, if I was to come down here and be all loud, I'm loud anyway. If I want to come down here and be loud, start cussing folks out, that's the kind of treatment I receive, only for your police chief to sit in my face and tell me that she know her officer's a sabotage harry. What is a citizen supposed to do with that? Okay? It's not working. Somebody needs to do something. It doesn't take you five months to investigate a case. Then you come back, we done made a mistake. Every time I call, I can't get nobody on the phone. My house was robbed and destroyed. My call was told by two police cruisers. We don't have no video of it. Ran me off the road. Nobody's doing nothing. I'm only four every day, and they telling me to pay for something. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not made of money. Maybe some of you are. You want to contribute? Fine. I got a child I got to send to school. I'm about to lose my home. I've lost 95% use of my arm because of this police negligence, and nobody said anything. I am crippled for life.
Mr. Morris, thank you for your comments.
Councilman Canaly, you are welcome.
Glanella Hicks, or is that Glenda?
It's Glenda.
Glenda.
Glenda Hicks, 69 Gillies Road, 21st Century, Memphis, Obusco Avenue. Why is it that Memphis is the one who always extends the olive branch? I want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman Walker, Councilwoman White, and Councilwoman Cooper Sutton for your comments regarding the issue that's before us as far as expanding the MLGW board. This board, this board represents the citizens of Memphis. You all are stewards for the citizens and the funds that these citizens work hard for and, of course, put out in taxes. How did this find out? And I know this is not the entire council because we have some new members who just took office, but when I heard about the scam that took place in February of 2022, wherein this body, this council, which acts as stewards for the citizens of Memphis, somehow allowed in excess of $773,000 to go to someone that was not Zelner Construction. Often, Joe Kent has come before you all and talked about how lax policies are regarding budgeting items and making sure that the budget is on point, that you are presented with factual data here and now. And had, one thing that sorely concerns me is the fact that, at that time, the now president of Memphis Light Gas and Water was CEO of the City of Memphis.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
That's an issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. On behalf of this body, the first time that I learned of that phishing scam was when I read it in the Daily Memphisian article, much like you.
But that's a problem. This council should have known. If checks and balances were in place like they should have been, that shouldn't have never happened. And the fact that we were in COVID or on the outskirts of COVID has absolutely nothing to do with proper procedure being in place to ensure that monies of the citizens is protected.
Ms. Hicks, I agree with you, but what we don't know, we don't know. But your time has expired. Thank you. Joe Kent.
Wow. Okay. Joe Kent, 5111 Flamingo. First, I would ask for a censure resolution to deal with staff interrupting proceedings as they work for us and report to you. You don't report to them. So this has been happening quite a bit. A censure resolution. Second, I know it sounds tough to tout investigating the district administration. We all know it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. Better would be to resolve monthly financials from the city through resolution with fund balances reported to you. Finance told me that they had the info months ago, yet my public information request remains unanswered. Also, better would be a resolution requesting the managed agreement nonprofits to submit their monthly financials. That would be better than talking tough about investigating the district administration. It's not going to happen. Not going to happen. And then back to the MLGW thing. I don't know the law, whether y'all can take funds from them. I don't know. I want to look at that and try to learn a little bit about that. And I know you can vote to sell it, and then it goes to referendum, but what you can do is you can create a community awareness project around letting all the community know how much excess funds, MLGW funds, are on the balance sheet, resolve to write a resolution to ask the MLGW board to give it back to the City of Memphis. There's a lot of things you can slow down the approval of their contracts based on them having all that excess cash on their balance sheet. There's innumerable things you can do to get that money back to the balance sheet of the City of Memphis, because it's just sitting there.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Hundreds of millions of dollars. Thank you.
John Hart.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is John Hart, 178 South Grove Park Road. I'm here again and be speaking on behalf of those who have no voice, and these are animals at Memphis Animal Services. Now, the mayor has appointed someone new. She has no animal experience. Ms. Clark may be a wonderful manager. She has no animal experience. The day after we had the meeting, the big meeting where everybody was in the same room together, they killed a perfectly healthy dog the very next morning. Over the weekend, there were several dogs that died because Ms. Clark did not check the email. And when a volunteer said, "Why did you do that?" She said, "I don't have enough staff to check an email, so we're just going to kill the dog." Come on now. It has to stop. And I'm asking. I've asked Mr. Spinoza, who's my councilperson. It's time that this council gets Memphis Animal Services into some kind of a committee meeting where we take some responsibility. Those dogs shouldn't have to pay with their lives. Why are they in trash bags with our money? Why? We have very good volunteers who've been at that shelter nine years, and Ms. Clark, at the end of that meeting, said she'll use her own volunteers and pretty much told them to back off. Now, these are people who set up the table in front so that euthanasia dogs could get the best shot. Let's use our volunteers from the city, our citizens, who know best, who have animal experience. You have a behaviorist there that has no college degree, and she's deciding what dogs should die. Come on. I have a degree in communications and animal studies. I have more experience than she does. And how much is she making of our tax dollars? Counsel, please, let's make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Abdur... I can't read the last name. All right. Papa Samba? No. Nubiel? Harun? Saidoo? Husam? Yvonne Davis? Yasser Saleh? Shante Brown? Larry Valair? Mohammed Mohammed? Sylvia Burks? Stephen McGall? Name and address for the record, please. You have two minutes. Name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Stephen McGall, 6241 Holly Park Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 3811. I'm concerned with the roads in Hickory Hill. When I moved in Hickory Hill in 96, we got annexed into the city right after that, and they didn't bother about, they paved the streets. They laid asphalt on top of asphalt. They didn't bother by grading it down. But now, you come down Shepherd Drive. Today, when they laid, well, last week, last month, when we did Shepherd Drive, they graded the surface down and then put asphalt down there. As we come out our driveways, entering and exiting through our driveway, it has a tendency to scrub in front of the car or the back of the car. You got to come in at a 45-degree angle in order not to scrub your vehicle in front or the back. I, April of 9, 2020, I wrote the City of Memphis about that, and I got a confirmation number 4605890. They told me that the attorney wrote me back and said, "She didn't find it anywhere. It was a city problem." That we was tearing our cars up by going in and out of our driveways, and I think that she didn't get a good look at it. I had several people from the engineering department came up and looked at it. And they said, "Yeah, we see the problem. What can we do about it?" You had to take it up higher. And so that's what I did, and nothing was done before about it. Then they go to the second one. The second one, you got a pothole on Kirby Parkway between Riverdale and Shepherd Drive that's very, very bad, where the asphalt is lifting up above the level of the street, and I hit it on a trike on the 29th of last month, and I was in hospital for two days, and I think they didn't do something about the pothole out there in Kirby.
Mr. McGall, thank you for being here. Thank you for comments. I would like to learn more about the specifics. I'm going to get my assistant to give you my card so we can speak further about it. Is that okay with you? Okay. Robin Joyce.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Robin Joyce, 1886 Lindell Avenue, Memphis 38107. I own a restaurant at the corner of Tennessee Street and Butler, 196 Tennessee Street, and back in May, the Smoke Slam Festival entered into an agreement, rental agreement for Tom Lee Park. This year, they decided to limit all access to the bluff. You could not, as a resident, enter the bluff. As a guest to Tom Lee Park, you could not enter the bluff. It hindered any sort of foot traffic from Main Street and Front Street down Butler Street and Hewing to Tom Lee Park. And my question is, does the rental of Tom Lee Park also include the rental of the entire bluff? Because I felt, I feel as though it limited anyone that was trying to do business at the top of the bluff, anybody that lives at the top of the bluff, anyone that was choosing to walk the bluff, could not go down to Riverside Drive. In my mind, the rental of Tom Lee Park encompasses the easternmost curb of Riverside Drive to the park, but they completely controlled the bluff, not allowing anyone to enter. And during the three days of the festival over the past several years, we have provided meals and fed groups of people that are participants and guests to the barbecue festival this year we could not, and it was a huge financial drain on us. And so my concern is, did they overstep, or did Memphis River Parks actually give them access to control the bluff as well?
Ms. Joyce, can you hang on for just a few minutes after the meeting is over? Let me speak to you?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Walker, followed by Councilman Warren.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment with respect to the gentleman from Hickory Hill. I want to follow up with you as well, and I'll get your, someone just got your information. I'll get it from her. And thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments.
Councilman Warren.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce, at your restaurant, the previous years, you did reasonable business when we had the music festivals. What was the amount of business loss this year at your restaurant? Come up to the mic.
When Tom Lee Park was closed, it's a difference of about $3,500 over the course of three days. And that's not only income towards the restaurant, but also any sort of gratuities for my staff. It was just, it wiped us out.
Okay, and other businesses on that, I think we're talking about this block that's running...
Between G.E. Patterson and Butler. There's two restaurants there, and then anybody that would have tried to enter from the Farmer's Market on that Saturday.
I do recall they used to have entrances for Memphis in May there, but you could...
They have one at Butler. They have one at Hewing. They allow you access from South Bluffs. None of that was accessible this year.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.[1796.32]